Miles down the road, you may, may probably not need the clerical person, one custodian, you know, it just all depends. But then you do save the electricity and the upkeep on the facility. But consolidation, the personnel in like grade levels is where the savings comes with consolidation.
Ten questions from Ms. Penny on that. It's not all too second to last issue, but that deals with new construction. And much like combining non-light schools, consolidation or new construction have a similar thing. We actually talking about a new facility that allows for all sorts of extension, all sorts of reconfiguration of redistricting of current students. But what I want to share with, what I see as the possibility of how do you pay for new school construction? The biggest issue that we have is taxpayers and plain cash, how do you pay for something? And that has to come through us as taxpayers. But we have to figure out, do we want to make that kind of investment out here? As a taxpayer payer, I'm certainly ready and willing to do that. But it does come with revenue, what we call debt service. So half for you, item D, kind of give you an idea of some of the things that I think would be available in relation to debt service and new construction. When we look at available revenue, if you look at the school that could possibly be consolidated in some form or fashion, there's an immediate amount that you can see that's a part of the cost of running that facility, utility costs. Now, as with anything, if those buildings remain as long as they're owned by the district, there had to be some level of upkeep that we'd have to maintain. So you wouldn't necessarily see that full $290,000 that would go towards debt service. The next section, where you see debt service, six, seven, eight, nine, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, that is the debt that we owe the current high school that we have now. That payment is about $2.1 million, and it's been reducing over time. The school district pays $900,000 of that. It is not a reducing amount. County commissioners are paying 1.1 million, and their amount reduced over the term of that debt. So as you see, when you get to the latter years of that debt service, the majority of that is paid by the school district. Now, if at some point we were able to retire that debt, county commissioners make a decision about eliminating the remaining balance, then that means roughly $2.1 million now comes free. That $900 that the school district gets is a part of the sales tax revenue that we get to maintain all of our facilities. So we do still have facility needs that we would need to address, and we'd have to have questions about what we would want to put towards new facilities. So with that being said, there are a number of revenue possibilities. The first being a performance contract that we have, that's about $251,000 a year. That was about, I want to say eight or 10 years ago, Ms. Penny, you correct me if I'm wrong. But this was the ability to go in and retrofit lights in the building, and we actually saved quite a bit through that retrofit fee. We went down to the last payment of $251,000, which will be done, and that money will be freed up. We also have the availability of using lottery funding to put towards the retirement of debt on the school facility. Lottery funding depending on how we play as citizens. I don't necessarily play the lottery, so we're getting a big front of me. But those numbers could range from 250,000 a year, as high as 500,000 a year. That varies from time to time. So I think if we made a commitment to do $250,000 out of the lottery proceeds, then I think that would be a safe amount. Ms. Penny, you might want to share what is the balance of our lottery capital fund? And if you have it with, you may want to give some information about how the revenue is ever flowing in the past.
Right now, we have completed all of the projects that we have used lottery money for. The last thing, the cooler freezer over at Clarkton. Okay. Our balance right now is $1,523,000. So far this year, they have credited our account with $112,426. $36,210 was put in July for the quarter ending June 30th, and $76,216 was put in November for the quarter ending September 30th. Those figures are down from the previous year. We have actually been averaging, I'm going to say 10,000, I mean 2011, 12, we are averaging, I'm going to say 330,000 dollars a year. If the trend continues for this year, we may get 225,000. We have been as high as 856,000, and this year's, if these figures are any indication of what we're going to get this year, then it will be our lowest year about, I'm guessing, 225,000 dollars.
So that kind of gives you an idea of what the lottery funding looks like, and what kind of tolerance the board would have in terms of putting money towards debt service. Where you see capital, VCS, as I told you, we have the $900,000 that we put towards the retirement debt with the high schools. If that debt is paid off or eliminated through whatever mechanism the board, the commissioners would want to do, you have that $900,000 that's now free. I would recommend that you only put about $500,000 of that towards debt service and new facilities, because we still have other issues that we need to address. We know that we've got high school roofs that are approaching 15, 16 years, so you're probably talking 350,000 or more to replace them. We heard Ms. Penny talk about the children, we heard her talk about the old issue that we have. So we've got to be able to have room to do those other things. But the 1.1 million that the county commissioners would have, they will be willing to put 750 towards debt service. And based on numbers with utility cost saving, we could look at something in that 200,000 range. Now, you're talking about not doing essentially anything that's vastly different than what we're doing, and having about 1.9 million dollars that will be available for debt service. So cost it out over X number of years, it'll tell you how much money you've been put towards the building. The great thing about new buildings is that it's a footprint that's there for an extended period of time, 30, 40, 50 years, the latest facilities for kids, but we know that they deserve. And it's the same as, in my opinion, if you consolidated the building versus building new construction. So that's kind of the idea of what you would have for debt service. So on the next page now, I'm going to share with you some ideas about new school construction, this is item two. These numbers can vary greatly, and I was looking at, she had another idea in a minute that kind of gave you an idea of what we're talking about. So if you're talking about a paid building of 500 students, new building has roughly 8,000 square feet. Now, the problem with square footage of that, when it comes to the cost per square foot, that can vary based on the amount of construction that's taking place at that time, all sorts of things that will become. So you could be looking at anywhere from 180 to 265 dollars per square foot. So with that being said, an 80,000 square foot building could run anywhere from 14.4 million to 21.2 million. Then you look at the cost per square foot for furniture and technology, percentage that's going to have to be done for survey and testing, 5% contingency with things that may overrun. So you could, on the low end, invest a very conservative investment of about 19.5 million, at the highest 28 million. And then you see the same kind of numbers for caves, you only get for 600 students, about 91,000 square feet. Then what would be a very large cave building, for 800 students, 112,000 square feet, you see those same numbers. So when you begin to look at the bottom, the kind of combination that you could do, a 500 to 600 cave, a 500 to 800, or 600 to 800, you can look at any different number of combinations that you want, then you will see what that would cost in terms of new construction. So the next page, item F. Because I wanted the board to understand that if that's a possibility of being able to construct new buildings, then that might be a better, more viable option, than consolidating buildings to where essentially the savings is needed, but you're still going to be, you're able to free that debt of building a new building. Now you're talking about building a new building in Tar Heel, building a new building in Clarkton, Dublin, the age of the building is actually pretty good condition. But now you have the opportunity for communities to have new buildings in that community for the next 40 or 50 years, and then pretty much for the same that you would be doing if you consolidated and put kids in it. Yes, sir.
Are you going to present the same information as at the forum?
What I would do is present all the information about school consolidation that I know is what the public needs to hear. So yes, I will present that information, but it will also be able to give the community an opportunity to ask questions, because those are the things that you really need to hear from them. If you had the opportunity to talk as administration boards, who would never have the opportunity for the public to get real feedback. So yes, I would share that information, because I think that's something that they would definitely want to do. So if you look at item F, this is the same thing as doing, the numbers that are giving you a little grain of detail of those things that you'd have to consider when you look at a building. So the first is for 80,000 square feet, 91,000, and 112,000. So you've got to deal with things such as surveying and board, construction, commissioning, special inspection, all of those things that are part of what you have to do. Depending on if you decided to construct a school on existing property, then you may or may not have to purchase land. The same thing comes with water, sewer, things of that nature. If you have current utilities that you can hook into, then those are costs that you don't have to incur. Then you have to make a decision about furniture and equipment, and the other soft costs that are overrun. So this gives you an idea of what a possible cost could be, around $30 million, depending on the kind of furniture you want, the kind of technology you want, the kind of material that you want to use in the facility. So that is an idea of how you can have that fluctuating cost between 22, 23, 24 million versus a $30 million building. You have the same thing for other sized buildings. So that gives you an idea of what new construction costs. So with that being said, 1.9 million, being able to go towards new construction without the county commissioners, without the school district really doing anything different. The commissioners would certainly have to make a decision about whether they would provide additional funding if you decided to construct two schools that went beyond with 1.9 million dollars to pay. So that's kind of an idea what we're going to have. In my opinion, this is something that I think the board should consider seriously, because it's an opportunity to still have school buildings within communities, but also have a new facility that can also be extended for any kind of configuration that the board would want to do. Finally, I did want to provide a copy of the general statute requirement. This is what government has been doing for just something that we need to do. And if that stopped, it's going to give the board an opportunity to ask, be their administration question, certainly what the board can get into, about all the things, with administration about your thoughts. And then at that point, you'll have a more solid direction where you can continue to carry on.
Would you like the cause to chair with us?
Dr. Taylor, we were meeting in open forum for the community to be able to tell us what they think and everything, but before we even go there, I might add a quick question. Should we not present it before the county commissioners and get their, their take on it first before we even bring this to them? Because the county commissioners say, no, it's time, this is, we're not able to do this, so why get the community all in a sort before that? Because it might be more of a void anyhow.
I agree with that assessment, that this is something that you definitely need to share with the commissioners, get their input. I've had talks with the commissioner chair, but he asked me that, you get some numbers together, and you bring them to, and I'll take a look at them, so. I think you're absolutely right, that I think our next thing needs to be, to have that conversation with the commissioners, to see what is their tolerance for looking at taking on additional debt for new school buildings. Now, if we don't have their blessing, we can certainly have a community forum with our citizens, and they can give us input. They certainly may decide to go to the commissioners and say, look, we want you guys to get behind new school facilities and thank our kids deserved. But I agree with you 100%, that I think our next step should be, we got numbers, we need to know what you're thinking as a commissioner board.
And you're saying new construction really can go and be possible until after 2020?
No. If you look at moving into a new building, you'll start paying that debt once you move in. So best case scenario, mantle falls out the sky, and the commissioners give us everything that we want, the earliest we can be in a building will be 2019, because we're taking about 24 months, give or take, to get into that building. And then if you look at the debt service, at that point, Penny, what would we still own by then?
No, 1.4.
So that would be 2.2 million. So that would be the question that the commissioners would have to make then, you know, we pay that debt off, and that frees up everything, because really at that point, the majority of that would be on the board. You know, they, you know, year number eight, they'd only be paying 500,000, is the last week when I'll be on the board. So my request would be that if you take that right, that they have to make a decision about how they deal with that debt. And I've had kind of some insight on that, that's something that some may be willing to do, that we know is denying commissioners and for new ones, so we'd have to figure out what their tolerance would be. So you're absolutely right, you would have to make a decision about paying that remaining portion off of 2.2. Yes, sir.
I hope we have the possibility of one of those buildings built in Clarkton.
I'll go back to what I said before, that that's the starting point, that my opinion is that the community would not get behind losing a building. So my thinking would be, put that building in Clarkton. One of the things that we had talked about is sort of a central location between East Arcadia and Clarkton, where you would have the ability to be pouring East Arcadia into that building, and have a building that would serve all the kids in that community.
I guess it's no secret that I'm in favor of keeping a school in Clarkton. And, you know, the consolidation, I can go with the consolidation of Booker T. Washington and Clarkton School. But my vote is going to be for a school to stay in Clarkton. Absolutely. I want very, you know, I want to all we can. But it doesn't have anything to do with who's here, or they're just, you know, I've been involved with all the changes in that part of the county. I live in an area where I have children, grandchildren, that would be bused a little too far. And then there are some people that would look at moving over to Columbus County and transferring to other systems. You don't want to lose any more students, but that's, that's the way I feel. And I'll be remiss about it.
Well, I'm hoping that we each feel like, but let's kind of not take anything with what you said, but shouldn't the commissioners know what the county folk want, is there a way that we can?
I agree, and I think that whenever we began, they started letting their voice known. But I don't think that it takes a form. I think from here, they hear what is on the board, they see what we're looking at. Now it's time for them to start talking, so that whenever we do present this to the county commissioners, the county commissioners already have heard from some of them, and if it's heard from some of them, they know that more is going to come.
So you're telling me then, in the open day, that we need to start talking, county commissioners?
Well, it is. Now is when we need to start talking, because every day we wait, every year we wait, we know that that square foot is going to go up, it's not going to get any cheaper to build. But I do, since I'm talking about this, I want to try to make something clear, especially about East Arcadia. And maybe I missed something here, but I did not think that we were talking about closing East Arcadia. Now, you said something about the new facility being built in Clarkton. I thought we were going to keep the K5 maybe, or K6 in East Arcadia, because that is too far to bus those lot of kids. And maybe bring the seventh, eighth graders in to give them the opportunity to have ban, to give them the opportunity to be able to play football, softball, and basketball, things that they don't have now, because they don't have the numbers to support it. But are we still?
That would be your comment, because we had a couple of things that we had on tape. We were strictly talking about consolidation. That is where one of those things would be, you may talk about East Arcadia, K5, and if you have a large number of students that live just in the council area beyond, that would be K5, they can then go to East Arcadia, and their enrollment would actually stay the same, it would be slightly higher. Then at one point when we were talking about the new construction, that was the idea of where we could put the building, that was a thought of making it a central location in council, to where you could bring all of those kids together. There was a talk of putting it in Clarkton, which many felt was too far for the East Arcadia kids. So when we just talked strictly consolidation, East Arcadia would become K5, and the middle school kids, those 35 to 40, so would come to the other school, and we'd save on those four teachers that we would have. So the idea would still be to have East Arcadia.
I got a couple of questions. How much money did we just spend on Booker T.?
220,000.
I mean, I would like to say like a projection of what we're going to spend on all schools in the next five years.
That's a very good suggestion, and we'll be able to pull those numbers together. You know, Mr. Neyland's kind of talked about some of that. Some of the things that you can't predict is if a children goes out of a large system or something like that. We can project on what we know is coming down the pipe. Looking at the high school, we know we're getting ready to spend about 600, 700,000 roots for those high schools in the next three or four years. It's coming, that's coming. With the other schools, if you think about a school like a Booker T., that big investment would be something like a roof. After that, probably wouldn't have any major thing that might come, but you never can tell what might go out, the HVAC system, or the wall, or whatever it may be. What we'll do is, I have Mr. Neyland to kind of look at, really I think we need a projection for all of the schools, because we do have a lot of that information, we'll update it so we can see what that would look like over the next few years. Major system going out, just normal things that we have to fix all the time.
With the major issue with the older schools, electrical.
Yes.
Well, we need to find out what it would take to get the electrical up to the standards in need to be.
Absolutely. And I think we may already have.
Some of that was in it, coming out of the board. I mean, it's a pretty rough effort, and it's really probably pretty good, because they brought, they brought a pretty good panel of legislators, and that was not just looking at something that you might expand, just flat out saying it's not even up to code because of the age of the school. So anything you do, even just making the school better, is going to stress that 6 million dollar. A lot of that is in the facility study portion of, this is kind of the longer version before they came out with the shorter renovation.
Have you thought about, like I said before, the court said that Clarkton isn't so big. So where would you find that land in Clarkton building?
Well, you got, we got a couple of options, and that is a good question. If you look at Booker T., there's a large amount of land that's behind this school, that could accommodate, you know, 80,000 square foot. The same thing with Clarkton, that you got the athletic field portion of that area, so you'd be able to construct a facility there. So one of the questions that you have to ask is that if you put it on the Clarkton site, then what do you do with the current structure? And that is where the sentimentality, if you will, also gets involved. Regardless of what we decide to do, at any point we build a new facility, then those remaining facilities, we either need to get out of the business of owning those facilities, or you may have to look at demolition.
That's where I was going, and if you figure the demolition cost, it adds to that.
No, we'd have to calculate that eventually. Now, one of the things I would say is that because we put a new roof on Booker T., and because we don't really have any training space, we used to use extended hope of that purpose. We don't have any of that now, so we have to go out and tussle with schools and use that media centers and everything else. So that would be a facility that would be in relatively good condition to allow us to do training as a district, and other things that we can't currently do, that we used to do with extended hope. So that would be a good thing, probably for more to look at maintaining. Clarkton would be a much larger, it would be probably a much larger footprint if we wanted. You could look at keeping the new portion of the building, the newer portion of Clarkton.
I think it was constructed, maybe seven of those, somewhere around that time?
So you got the new portion, then you got the older portion that we're looking at for. So those are the kind of decisions that we'd have to make about what do we do with those facilities, and that is certainly where we would want input from the community, and we, very good.
Let's go back to Tar Heel. We were talking about transferring schools from Dublin to Dublin. Tar Heel building is old. Tell us about that.
Exact same thing, that my suggestion would be that you build a K8 school in Tar Heel that would accommodate Tar Heel Middle School and Plainfield primary. And then if, and again, I don't think that the community of Dublin would be willing to give their schools up. We're talking about going seven miles to Tar Heel, outskirts, whatever you decide to put it, to a brand new building. But I don't think they were probably going to do that at this point. So my thing would be build a new building, K8, in Tar Heel. Looking at a 500 facility, a 500 student facility, I think that's great. You'd certainly be able to make plans where you could extend that building by adding additional crash, most designs kind of come of it now. As we know, Tar Heel and Clarkton, they're some of our oldest buildings, and they cost a tremendous amount to maintain. What did we just have happen over there? It was, what line was it that collapsed?
Where was that?
At Tar Heel.
That was a water, that was a water.
Water, you know, you had a problem with the water line, we had to fix that. We had the drain system that collapsed, that takes rainwater out to the Cape through maybe two or three years ago, cost us about $30,000. So there's always something that's going wrong, that as soon as you fix one day, there's something else that you got to fix. In my opinion, and as my grandmother would say, you're throwing good money out of the van, you know? Uh, in my, in, in my opinion, and as my grandmother would say, you throwing good money out the van, you know? You're actually giving a man money out the door, something like that. You're throwing me good money. There you go. So, so that would be my thing, is that, um, that's an old facility, and, um, um, all it's going to do is continue to cause us to have to pay money. You know, we spent, um, in about six years now, about a million dollars to redo the floor. Uh, and you see that, now you're starting to see the same, um, um, giving in the floor.
So, yeah, Tar Heel, that is the worst school in the county, right?
I would say it's the oldest building that we have, and, and like old things, they require a lot more attention than young.
So since it requires a lot more attention, we need to start thinking about that area more than anything else, right?
And we have been, but I would certainly say it should be at the top of it, uh, because it's, uh, an old building.
Well, I think when I did the county board, it stated that Tar Heel, their structure was bad, but part of its electrical, it's a leak, so it was kind of, you could also see somebody in there doing.
We can fix them, but that's quicker than you can fix the structure. Other comments?
I just, I, I just think we need new facilities.
Agreed.
I, I really do, I mean, you know, um, companies probably would like to come to Blaken County and open up shop, and then they take a look at our facilities at our schools, and they don't want to come. They can go to, you know, Cumberland County, wherever they were to have, or Hope County, where they have nice new school facilities, where their children can get them, that's where they go.
And since Tar Heel was already in the county, most people come from that way, we would start there, right?
Yeah, I, I would. I would think you would want to start there. Yeah, I would, I would think so. Just thought that would finish.
Okay, thanks so much.
I mean, I don't think we ever finish, that's, that's the thing, we don't ever finish.
We got to have a start.
We got to have a start, and we just keep on, keep on building.
Any other comments? We know we got to start some places, and what, what is your recommendation for the board, or, or we move to?
I think you need to, um, get to the county commissioners.
Can we do it, uh, sort of like this, uh, link concept with the county commissioner in letter form or whatever? Because we haven't written information yet, we haven't, and begin to find out what the public is really interested in. We can, we can share with the county commissioner, and that one that makes their trip, so we can move forward to get out on what the situation is.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, if you would, uh, allow me to do some information on the board. Uh, what I would do is, uh, get on the commissioners, uh, wanted, because they just had their, they had the first and third.
Right.
I would love to get on their meeting on the third and try to get on that agenda, and put some numbers together, share with the, with the chair, and, and go and share that with the commissioners, and kind of get some feedback, and let them know what it is that we're thinking. And, um, let them know what they're thinking of, and at that point we'll see what it is that happens.
Okay, education is so critical, isn't it? I think that it's possible for you to get with the county commissioners, ask them to, tell us, or, this is a special session, maybe that's another thing that you need to talk about.
Absolutely.
Get started.
You're offline, sir?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Chair, um, there's a motion on the floor, we've got a minute, I'd like to amend the motion that first, take the county commissioners, and we proceed with the, uh...
It's been moved up to second, that we, uh, amended the motion that we take the county commissioners, of course, in the form store. Any discussion?
Um, well, this form that we have, um, is that part of the general statute?
Yes, sir.
Now, we have to abide by?
And I'll admit, uh, this is kind of a topic that we are...
Or is this just a information session, is, is I guess what I'm asking?
And Mr. Gray, I agree with you, but, but, count depending on what you, what you want, and I'll say this, and let him correct me, because I, I probably messed it up a little bit, but if you're talking about consolidation, and the statute requires that you have a form as, as a part of that. Now, that may be different when it comes to totally new construction.
Um, now, you're still closing the school.
Why?
You're still closing the school, so, uh, uh-uh. And I think you would have to have...
In addition, especially?
Now, uh, and are we going to have one form, are we going to have a form that the, the community is at?
Explain the community.
That they're being affected?
In addition, session, in addition, session, ready to go.
Of course.
I'm afraid that you don't have the signs of a heart.
Uh-uh.
What's your thought for the county commission between nine, third week, third one, twenty-seven, ten, or whatever? Hopefully that makes four, do you think? Start with, uh...
Absolutely.
Anything else that we need to share about our facilities, senior? But now, the new things are on the next section, I get a motion, go to the next section for, 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 you know, for North Carolina. General statute, one forty-three, Act eighty-eighteen, one-one, some of the term in the middle, the North Carolina statute, one forty-two, that's eighteen, eleven, three. And this past year, we was having a student dispute for the twenty-seven four, following, like, that. I will try to do a little session on this stuff. I'm afraid we're going to have to sign. Thank you all, in case you don't...